Welcome to the May 29 School Board meeting. Catty Winters is unable to be here, so we have Jeanette Carter conduct the meeting at least for now. And right now, I guess I'm calling Lady Porter. Before we approve the agenda, we have a couple of changes to make. Item nine will not be the stated handbooks. It will be consent issues instead. Should we look all over the agenda?
Thank you so much, my laptop. Who's going to make the decision here? Is there something I can add?
Okay, number nine will not be the handbooks. It will now be consent issues. And then we want a 16 and executive session, and that will be for legal contracts. So would that do, we have a motion to accept the agenda?
I shall move.
Thank you, John. Or thank you, John. Thank you, David.
I'll second that.
Thank you, David. And there are no delegations, obviously. Does everyone want to vote? Oh, sorry. No, no one wants to vote.
Okay.
Yes, it has been voted. Okay. We have a vote. We have a motion and a second for approving the agenda. All in favor?
Five.
Six. Okay. And there are no delegations, so we've got the consent agenda, which exists of approving the minutes, payment of bills, the treasurer's report, the clerk's report, and the rec commission report. Is there a motion to accept the motion?
I'll approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Deb. Is there a second? Any discussion? I can't even think. Okay. All in favor? Six oh.
Be that.
No, I don't know. We're not voting. Okay. And then next we've got the, we need to approve the donation from the Education Foundation. Do you want to talk about that?
We need to just bring number five up when Nikki's able to join us. She's at a baseball game. As soon as she gets here, we'll slide five back into the order.
Five? Okay, thank you. So then we need to approve restitution check for $290.
I shall move.
Thank you, David. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Bree. Any discussion? All in favor? Next we have the activities handbook.
I gave you copies of the suggested activities handbook last month from Lincoln June, Senior High Administrator, and the administrative incoming. And I just wanted to see if there's any discussion, any questions that Christie or Mrs. Walter can answer. But we would like to have the board take action on that tonight.
Have they looked at this? Do you have any questions or issues with the activity handbook?
I don't think it did.
Okay. So do we have much to approve?
I'll approve the activity handbook.
Second?
A second.
And Bree? All in favor? Six oh. Okay. And then we've got the course credit for applied math, animal science, horticulture, and anatomy and physiology. Chris, I think you got a presentation. It's easier to see or explain than you can see what I'm talking about.
So with the hiring of the new ag person who will be FFA, we're adding courses to the student selection. And two of the courses that she will be teaching is horticulture and animal science. And then the third one, anatomy and physiology, our new science teacher will be teaching that because we're going to add a health pathway, a CTE pathway, and that needs to be one of the courses. So we're eliminating advanced biology and replacing it with anatomy and physiology, animal science, and horticulture. And we're asking if these can be options as their third science credit, which I'll show you a little diagram here in just a minute. And then on the math side of things, there was a discussion. We're trying to find some room to fill all of our courses with two teachers, and the idea came up to add an applied math course as a third option instead of everybody having to take Algebra II as their math course. And I have a little diagram and explanation about that also. And then with the science and the ag pathway, there's some things we need to talk about when it comes to fine arts credits. And if we can add another fine arts class for them to take to get their fine arts credit, which I'll explain all of that in just a second. But that's what we're going to talk about here first. So for the science credits, right now, they can take physical science, biology, and then as a junior, they can take chemistry, advanced biology, and then as a senior, they can add physics to that. So this is what we're adding by adding our ag person, okay? So their freshman year, they'll take physical science, and their sophomore year, they'll take biology. And we feel like those are pretty much the foundation courses, that that is something that we don't want to change. And then, so those, they're two, those will be their two, everyone will have those two science credits. And then after that, they can, they have a choice of many courses that they can take for their third option that has your science credit. So horticulture, animal science, and then chemistry still, physics still, and then anatomy and physiology would be added to that. In talking with Morgan, she feels like if a student wants to, they could take biology and horticulture or biology and animal science the same year. It's not as if it's a prerequisite, but they would still take biology as their foundational class, and then they could take horticulture at the same year if they wanted to. That way, it opens them up for more options as a junior or a senior.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
So we have...
Give them more options.
Yes.
Yep.
And the horticulture and animal science is in that pathway, in the ag pathway, so we're allowing them to take more and more classes to be a completer in that pathway. The chemistry, anatomy, and physiology and physics, if they're going to college, then that's the path that they would need to take, or those are the courses they would need to take. To be a complete, what's it called?
Pathway?
No, a scholar.
Yeah, Kansas scholar.
Scholar can go to a completer, Kansas, I don't know what it's called, but to be a completer, they have to take physics. So that's still an option that we need to offer students. And to go to most region schools, they'll need chemistry as well, so there's just a lot of options that open up with this new ag pathway. So do you have any questions on that?
No.
No? Okay. So then, some things to consider, and this is where it all kind of gets, there's just lots of questions that I have to ask. So there's going to be a transition over the next couple of years for these kids that are in the ag pathway. Because we've got these kids right now who are in our industrial technology pathway, who have these things that they wanted, that they had planned on completing, and now are switching, kind of switching things up. So we have to consider that those kids, those juniors and seniors are in that pathway still, or they're still in that mindset that it's really hard to drop the ball on them and they just take, you know, the ag.
Yeah, kind of help them complete things.
Yes, correct. So we need to transition those kids out as they graduate, and then as that happens, transition the ag kids in, if that makes sense.
Yes.
So, or the ag pathway, I should say. So right now, we're going to offer horticulture, should be or animal science, as alternate years until the program gets established. To get, to be a completer in a pathway, you have to have an intro course. And right now, the intro course we have is in eighth grade. It's only a semester. So you only need a semester of the intro course in our current ag, or our current tech pathway, industrial technology pathway. So the ag pathway requires, their intro course requires a year. So we have to transition those kids who had a semester intro class, and then to be in the new ag pathway, they now have to have a year of an intro class. Does that make sense? So Morgan's going to have to have two intro classes, one for the eighth graders, and all your course, and then one for freshmen who haven't had that ag intro yet, okay? To do that, we had to drop one of those two courses. So we asked her if it was okay for this next couple of years, as we transition, if we could just teach horticulture or animal science next year, and then the following year, do the other one. And we're going to decide, we're going to, once kids start getting enrolled, we're going to see which one has a bigger enrollment. That's the one we're going to offer next year. And then, well, the next year, and then the following year after that, they'll just switch, if that makes sense, okay? So that's the transition that we're going to have to make. So after the first couple of years, then we can just offer one section of intro to all eighth graders. So then all eighth graders will be in that intro to ag for a full year after this two year transition. So have I confused you all with all of that? So we just have this kind of little gray area for the next couple of years, so we get everybody into that ag pathway and kind of out of the industrial tech pathway. And there I said that you can take biology and horticulture or animal science the same year. Morgan said that that would be perfectly fine, kids would be able to do that. And then we're creating this new health, it hasn't, we're going to, for next year, we have to do it by January, but we're going to create a new health pathway, which means our students that already take CNA classes and become certified in their high school career, then they will have created, or completed that CTE pathway, and there's tons that go along with that. There's a big push because there's a big need for that health pathway, so it would be a good thing that we had that option for our kids to. So we're going to, we won't have advanced biology anymore. It'll be replaced with anatomy and physiology. And Mr. Lee is really excited about teaching that class because that was something that he really wanted to do anyway, so. Those are just some things I need to explain to you. Does that, all of that make sense, how we kind of, we're going to start with that ag pathway next year?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So you're okay with horticulture and animal science being the third, the third math credit or science credit?
Yeah, it gives them a lot more options.
Yeah. Okay. And then we'll talk about math a little bit. So we had a meeting, and we have a group of kids kind of in a similar situation, but it's not so much science, more math, where there's really not a need for Algebra II, or they don't, there's just, we feel like these kids are going into technical schools and they're going into the career, into a fine career, that Algebra II is maybe not as necessary as it would be for a student that's going to college. So we have talked about, for the third math credit, those students would be, take applied math class, and I'll explain what that will look like here in just a second. So all students will take Algebra I, all students will take geometry, because we feel like those are those fanned up, foundational classes that you'll use in all of the other ones. And then those students who are going to college will take the Algebra II pre calc, depending on when they take Algebra I, that path. And then if they're not going to college, or they're going to a technical school, then they'll go applied math, and they can still take Algebra II as a senior if they choose to. So the third math credit would be an option of applied math or Algebra II. Okay? And of course, there's always, you know, options if they want to do more than that. So there's some things to consider in all of that. So my concern as a math teacher is what's the rigor going to be in applied math? Because I don't want it to be something that they can, that they're not going to learn something. So I feel like, I was very insistent that there did still be some rigor in that class, in those coursework, that coursework. But the courses will be things they can apply to their life. So there'll be some construction, some finance, and technology, various things that they will use, that math that they learned in geometry and Algebra I. And then concerns with, what if a student, you know, wants to take the easy way out, but still wants to go to college? We've, I said be very clear from the beginning, when a student enters high school, that they know, okay, so if I'm not going to go to college, that's when they're sophomores, they should know, if I'm going to go to college, or if I'm going to go to a tech school, if I'm not, if I'm going to go and find a job. If they're going to college, then they need to take that Algebra II pre calc path. There's no option. You know, you can't take, I mean, you can, I was just saying you can.
They just don't be prepared.
They won't be prepared if they take the applied math course, pathway, to go to college. So we just need to be very clear from the beginning with parents and with students, that if their plans are to go to college, that applied math is not an option for them. And that's why I kind of like being able to, if they take applied, they say, oh, no, I'm not going to go to college, or I'm going to go to a tech school. If they take applied math as their third math credit, and then they change their mind, they can still take Algebra II as a senior. And that would be...
That would help them.
That would prepare them for college if they changed their mind. So there's still an option if they change their mind. I feel like applied math would be something that teachers could work with, our ag people, and do some cross-curricular things, because there's just a lot of applications in both areas, so. Any questions on that?
Just a quick thing. So applied math, you're talking about everyday usage, is there, is there an established curriculum somewhere? Would they have that already?
We had, yes. We had some textbooks that Mrs. Flynn had gotten when she first started at Lincoln, and she just kind of put them away. So we still, we do have textbooks. I believe that there's going to be a lot of things that they'll want to do outside of those textbooks as well. Yes.
Does the finance, like budgeting, accounting, is it that kind of?
Yes. And Mrs. Flynn, well, not anymore, but in the business finance class, they do a lot of that as well, but I think there's more things, life that's applicable to their own lives that they would learn.
That would refer them more from life?
Yes.
One and a half, just one and a quarter.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay. So, and here's where we've had lots of questions. So, go ahead. Currently, students who do four years of metals or woods, they can get a fine, or a fine arts credit. That's our, that's something that the board approved several years ago. So we have juniors and seniors who currently are planning on completing four years of a metals or woods class to get their fine arts credit, so they don't have to take band or vocal or art, okay? So are we going to allow the ag welding and the ag structures, which is, has some woods pieces in it? It's not just all woods. Are we still going to allow them to complete that class, that fourth year, and get a fine arts credit? Because if we don't...
Then they can't continue.
Then they're going to have to take vocal or band or art class their senior year, which they weren't planning on doing, weren't planning on finishing up the four years. So this is the gray area that we're in right now. The other thing is, will we still be able to offer a fine arts credit with the four year completion and the ag welding, ag structures classes and that CTE pathway? Now, the reasoning behind the four years of metals or woods as a fine arts is because they have to design, and they have to build, and some of the pieces that they make are really quite beautiful. And there is some, I believe, some artistic ability that is needed in to do those things.
Yes.
Are they still going to have those things in ag welding and ag structure classes? Because it's not all going to be welding, you know? The whole class isn't going to be welding, there's going to be some mechanics in there, there's going to be some other things. Ag structures isn't just going to be building projects, you know, there's some other things. I'm not really sure all the things, I didn't really look that careful at all, which is a lot of things that they're going to be offered in those classes, not just drawing or drafting and creating projects.
I mean, when you repair something, you'll see the picture in your mind where it's post.
Looked like a two-year-old.
I suppose that you are, yeah, I suppose you do, yes. And so then, if we don't, okay, we need, we are, we believe that there needs to be another option for a fine art credit besides just band, vocal, or art. Digital media would be an option for that, if they take four years of digital media, because they design, they create, they draw, and even like in paw print, they design shirts, you know, there's a lot of artistic ability that's required to do that. But it's not just one class, and we can't, it's not one year, it's four years through that program. So those are some considerations we have to think, or you guys will have to think about, or we'll have to think about as we move forward through these new, this new area that we're getting into. So right now, students can take vocal or band or art, or four years of metals and woods to get their fine arts credit. So, what do you think? So maybe I'll start. Are you okay if our students who are juniors and seniors who have been planning on getting their fine arts credit through the ags, ag or the welding and the woods, to go ahead and complete that for the next two years through these ag structures and ag welding? For those students who have kind of had planned on it?
Yes.
And then maybe consider in the next couple of years, maybe know a little bit more about what ag welding and ag structures contains before you decide if you want to do that?
Okay. Yeah.
So we're doing a service if we don't let them, when it's just the plan, or what they're going to change.
Well, and generally, when you make it, when you add a new credit, it's like the freshmen are the ones of the first year that have to complete that credit. The sophomores, juniors, seniors get, you know, they don't have to have that credit. So you usually kind of lean them in anyway. But this is kind of the flip side of things, kind of the opposite. We have seniors and juniors who have planned on it, and if we take that away from them, kind of they're kind of, you know, sitting there. So are you guys okay if we go ahead and give them that fourth year fine arts credit at least for next year?
Yes.
And then maybe spend some time looking at what the classes entail for the other ones, to see if you want to continue that?
Is the ag welding, ag structures, is that going to be a year class, like one semester of each, or is you can take ag welding, that'll be a whole year of welding and a whole year of structure?
Correct. Okay.
Yeah. I think so.
This just highlights the beauty of local control. The State Board of Education can determine what credits are needed to be a high school graduate in Kansas, but the board gets to identify those credits. With your ability to pick four years of metals and woods to be a fine arts credit, that just gives you the flexibility and the freedom for that. So you may need to digest this for a little while as you think about it. And then the administrative team, they can determine what kid is in what position and what they need to be able to do this phase out and phase in. I do like the idea of digital media as a fine art, because it is the way art is done. There are specific artists that are just digital media specialists and published artists that do that, so I think we have to give that a little credibility. If I could just jump for a second to this, I hope everybody understands how exciting this is. It's a little confusing, it may be a little muddy, but right now, one of our survey questions that got a lot of support was ensure an effective college and career rated curriculum for every student. And when we're using programs like Zello to identify an individual path of study or that IPS, we are now getting to a place where we can address students individually with these options of science, with the options of fine arts and digital media, and with the options of math. We are getting away, as we should have a long, long time ago, from a cookie cutter, every square peg must go through this round hole called high school graduation. And by getting the right people, we're, this is just a huge leap forward, and I couldn't be more excited about it. The health profession is one of the top needs in the state of Kansas, so you would think it was teachers here, but in the state overall, healthcare is the number one need, and the faster we can move to pathways that get kids ready for that and get them done, you know, pre-med kids, they usually get a CNA in high school, a CMA, and they start getting certifications right out of the door, which helps our effective rate. Every student that we can get some sort of an industry recognized credential is automatically classified as an effective graduate of 298. So I just tickle to death that we can have relevant choices for kids with different interests. However, if you want those to be credits, if you want horticulture, animal science, anatomy, physiology, that does take board action. Fine arts, that does take board action to say that is an acceptable requirement for graduation in 298.
So the digital media, the four years of digital media, that wouldn't, I mean, we wouldn't need to know that immediately as a credential, is that fair?
Well, your incoming, your incoming freshman next year will be able to make that plan. So, you know, I hate to say it, but the sooner the better, because once enrollment gets here, they can be counseled that, hey, this can be your fine art credit. Otherwise, where are they going to, if they start as sophomores, where are they going to get the fourth one?
Yeah, that's true.
So if I understand this right, you couldn't take three years of digital media and then take band and get a fine arts credit?
You couldn't, yes.
Well, the band itself would account for it, one year of band would account for it.
So one year of art, one year of band, and one year of vocal, each one of those counts as your credit. So you don't need four years of that to get your fine arts credit, you just need one.
Some students just don't have an interest in music.
Yes, I understand that, I understand that. So by taking the four years of metals and woods, that makes up for all of it?
Yeah. Does that make, yeah. So you can, you can take vocal your freshman year and be done with your fine arts, fine arts credit.
Okay.
And or band or art. It's just that we, the four years of ballots, we did, they want it to be a little bit more...
For the people who...
Yeah. Because you want, I mean, you refine and you make your craft better every year.
Okay, yes.
And just to add on another exciting piece of news, Morgan has been so proactive and worked with Brenda and got ahold of the state, and even though we missed the deadline for pathway approval, we got an exception, and this pathway is approved for next year, which means we can start an FFA chapter. You have to have an approved pathway before you can start that process of applying for a charter. So a lot of kudos to Brenda and Morgan and Christie, working together to get this pathway jammed through the state, and now we're off to the races.
And I'll add, digital media, we start out with photography, which is art. We do Adobe products, I did Adobe Photoshop, I'll continue with illustration, Illustrator, and do more of that digital media, so it is artsy.
It is art.
And we can put some of those products into the lead art show and stuff.
So that's a signal that we're getting that problem next month, then? Because it's not going to be...
Well, there is, it is information action.
So we can't take action on that tonight?
We can take action on it tonight, if you want to table it until next month, but, you know, there are some logistics to figure out, so.
I think we're allowed to.
Yes, absolutely.
The actual new partnership just made sure we had ag welding and ag structures as a credit for fine arts for juniors and seniors?
And then that would go away, that option for fine art would go away, but we would also those that started it to complete it.
Yeah.
Yes.
And it will just go different for the other kids going forward.
So, I mean, if we figure it out, it could possibly become a fine art credit if we like the way it's structured or not, because it means...
Not the ag part of it. That's going to focus more on the science side for credit in the ag program. We just need to have this current fine art, four-year metal wood sunset in two years, and in that same time, we transition to getting kids in a different area for their fine art.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll go.
Are you done with?
I'm done, yes.
I'm ready for a question.
Yes.
I would move that we approve these course credits, applied math, animal science, horticulture, DMP, and also allow AG welding and AG structures to be a fine arts credit for two years and digital media.
And digital media for four years.
So four years to be a fine arts credit.
I'll second this. I'll fight for second.
Okay, so we, it's been motion made by John and seconded by Deb. Are you, we all have that again? We hear you, you guys ready?
Yeah, we're ready.
Good, okay.
So any discussion otherwise?
I think it's a great opportunity for our kids. I think it's going to give them a lot better options, prepare them better for the features they want, so I'm excited.
We agree.
So, all in favor?
Thank you, Christie, very much.
Yes.
Next, we will discuss facilities use.
Now, if you see the minutes from the last board meeting, it was tabled and it said it would be discussed at the next meeting. We allowed groups to use facilities specifically, but the board requested that we wait until the next meeting to discuss public use.
Yes.
And just to throw an idea out there, I would say, let's get through the school year, and I would recommend that June 1 is when the facilities open up, just my recommendation.
I think that sounds good.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to do that.
Okay, so TJ. You ready to second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we've got a TJ moved and John seconded, waiting until June 1 for the facilities to open to the public. All in favor? Six oh. Thank you. And then we move on to the return reception.
Yes, do you want to talk about that, John, retail?
It doesn't matter, we just need a formal motion so that we can rent the bench and expend the funds for the.
We usually have a retirement.
What's the date of the retirement?
Thursday, the 20th, from 2 to 4:00.
Okay.
Is that the motion to?
Yes, I move that we hold a retirement reception Thursday, on Thursday, the 20th, from 2 to 4:00 p.m., is that?
That's good.
She's shaking her head.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Bree. Moved and reseconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Six oh.
Okay, and then we have the staff appreciation luncheon, discussion on how that's going to look. We've done, in the past, it's been a luncheon, that means a little discussion, maybe doing a breakfast instead of a luncheon, or still doing a luncheon, just kind of need to know what everybody's thoughts are on that.
We'll be looking at the 21st, May 21st.
It's the last day of school. Yeah, normally that's what it would be, is, yeah, the last day of school. Really, yeah. Is there a last working day?
It is the last teacher.
But Christie, we have people, you have staff that have, are going to be getting out earlier than that because they.
Yeah. And I will have someone, I don't know if they'll choose the option, but they have the option because they work at the track meet past their contracted duty day.
Okay, so staff has the option to not come to work that day.
Not necessarily not come to work, but at least have those hours off. If they stay three hours past their contracted duty time, they would take three hours off if they choose to.
Okay. I may have some that are gone most of the day.
Because they've worked, they've worked both.
They've worked the entire track meet, both track meets.
Okay.
They could come in for lunch though, if they wanted to.
Yes.
Or breakfast, could be closed down. Or breakfast, whichever. So what's anybody's thoughts on what that looks like this year? Who cares?
I would like to, I would definitely like to do something, probably a lunch.
I'd say lunch.
Lunch, lunch.
I think lunch would be great.
Okay.
And to my understanding, it's kind of been handled by a board member that's no longer on the board to do some of the main part of the cooking with that, so maybe we could.
If Monty used to do steak.
Oh, Monty and Joe, because I cooked, I just told them that they did. But Monty came in and gave me pork, because that's where he always had steak and chicken. And he can then cut up large pieces of beef for the steaks.
He would grab me the night before and then we kind of all helped him really.
Yeah, and then, then all, as many of the workers, as could, helped, we helped serve the whole thing.
Yes.
And the cooks helped with it.
We were talking, I would, I would smoke brisket and smoke some chicken. I enjoy doing that. And if, if the board thought that was something, if the board thought that was something that would be worth doing, I would do that.
That's great.
I talked to Bree about whether we did brisket and cheesy potatoes and green beans, something we can throw in the oven that'll be hot and be served. And I don't think it's overly difficult to do, but if anyone's, and I would be willing to, she said she'd help head it up and we can make it work. I don't think it's, I think it's something the board should do for everyone, I don't think, even, even so that the cooks have most of the day off or don't have to do much, I think it's something we can do.
And I would be happy to help with figuring out the details of it, so that way we can kind of leave everybody else out of the mix as far as staff, so that way the board is doing all the behind-the-scenes work on it.
So you guys will figure out what we're going to do and what all of us need to do.
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Does that work?
If that works.
If you're willing to do it, just, yeah, you go right ahead.
Okay.
And why, being honest, I can't speak to the whole board, but.
Yeah, I definitely will help too, because I agree with John, I think it'd be great for the kitchen staff to get some time off, come to the meal, and have a lunch, and it's a lot nicer. We used to have it back to school, breakfast.
Yeah.
But end of the year with a nice lunch, have a little leave, I think. Teachers, administration have done an excellent job. And I agree with John, and I appreciate all of him, because we as board members definitely should do something for, for all of you.
Yes.
And this would be everybody, including like rural 10.
So everybody's employed by the school.
Yeah.
Do we have a rough, do we have a rough number?
You guys are going to want to get like an RSVP to see who's going to come.
Okay, okay.
And what we used to do was, who wanted chicken and who wanted steak? And so they notified the office, the office notified us, and then Vicki, Lupin, and I got together to order, to see how, you know, because the steak comes in boxes of so many pieces as to chicken, and so that had to be ordered ahead of time. So you'll want to know who you're attending, and so.
Who seems possible to accessible.
Yeah. Is it possible to get the brisket on my own from Sam's or to pick that out, or is that something we need to go through?
Echo versus Echo, I don't know if that's even a possibility for them, I don't know what they have, but yes, if you want to give them Sam's, you can do that too.
Well, okay.
So, and then it will depend upon what day you have it, so people can respond to you if you want to have it on Friday. And we can try to work that for the school if you want us to.
We can get a list.
Yeah, we'll kind of get together and get the details worked out. You do a lot for, you do so much for the school too, so if we can try to get some of this done without having to come down this office too, that would be something I'd like to do.
You guys can include the bus drivers too.
I think traditionally, aren't they, even though it's.
I suppose, whoever's.
Is that something that's usually been done?
It has, and we should.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Well, it'll depend on what we, if we can figure out RSVP, that's, I know you had one too, so. Could we run both? Yes.
So I guess we still need to have a motion though, to actually do it, is that right?
Yes.
So I need a motion to have a staff appreciation mail at noon.
Is it?
Okay, on May 21st.
Are you already at the high school?
Okay. John moves.
Same here.
Any discussion? Move by John, seconded by David to have the staff appreciation mail, the noon on the 21st. All in favor?
Six oh.
Thank you, John, bringing in, let all do, let us know what we can do to help you guys. So we can clean up. But you're on your own. I like it. Okay, and next we have the technology disposal.
I'll have Mrs. White talk to you about this. We are just getting in a situation where we're starting to backlog on old technology, old TVs and things like that, and I'll let her give you the numbers. But what we're looking is for board approval to either sell, put in the summer garage sale, something like that, just to get them out of our hair.
We replaced all of the old laptops at LES with the front books, and so we are needing to dispose of those laptops. And the garage sale is June 12th, so we need approval to possibly sell those. I have the IT class, and Rich is working on it, resetting them and going through them to see how many are salvageable and good enough to sell. We have about 80 laptops to dispose of. And then I emailed the classroom teachers, we still have the big TVs, some of them are mounted on the walls that they don't use anymore, so we'd like to get those down, and there's about eight to 10 of those, and we'd like to get rid of those at the sale as well.
And of the box TVs, last year we sold every one of them.
Really?
I don't know if this has been discussed in the past, but since we're broadcasting the games now, is there any way to get like one of those big TVs in the concession stand that people can actually see the game from there too, that more concession stand? Just a thought, since we have the TVs all set.
Yeah, because we just connected the internet to the live stream, yeah. We have that one that's right outside the common, the high school, but I don't know.
I didn't know about the football field, that's something.
Do we have any flat screens? All the ones in my building are the old box type.
Oh, they're the box.
Yeah, I don't even think they would work to stream, because they don't have that. The two flat screens that we have are used, that came out of the lunchroom, one's in Christie's building and one's in my building, and we use those every day.
They'd be called. Okay, do we have a motion to dispose of the antiquated technology through the LES garage sale, or applicable dispose of unusable items?
I move, we do. We do that.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Bree. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Six oh.
And we will go back up now to item five, which is the approval of the donation from the Education Foundation.
Mrs. Flynn?
So last month, the Education Foundation met for a meeting. We have kind of been in the process of setting goals, because the foundation sat dormant for quite a while. So in the last two years, they received a large sum of money that we finally kind of have set goals that we can hand some of that money out. So the foundation would like to donate $52,500 to the district, with $40,000 earmarked for curriculum, $5,000 given for activities to be set on a rotation each year, $2,500 to be given to the elementary school for building needs, $2,500 to be given to the high school for building needs, and also another $2,500 to be given out for teachers, to purchase teacher-paid teachers for the upcoming school year.
Awesome. Do I have a motion to?
I move, we accept $1,000 from the Education Foundation. Thank you very much.
You have a second?
I'll second.
We have discussion, we don't need to discuss that.
Well, hopefully we can continue to give a large sum every year, we're kind of set goals now, so hopefully we can continue to keep that going.
Great, we appreciate it. All in favor of accepting money? Six oh.
This is a huge move, and every opportunity that you have as board members, I hope you can heap on praises on the Education Foundation for the position they're in and the move that they took at the last Education Foundation meeting, for ongoing intentional distribution of funds to support the school. That is phenomenal.
All right, we are now into administrative reports. Mrs. Schmidt, do you have more things?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. One of the things that we got to do at our building this month, and it was a wonderful thing to see, was we were able to host a 4th and 5th grade science fair, and we had entrants that worked in teams, we had some students that worked individually. Mr. Krenshaw got to come over and see all of those exhibits, and it was a wonderful thing to see our community patrons back in the building and our parents, and for our students to receive confidence in presenting different projects, I, just a myriad of different projects. One of the things that we really liked and that we worked on, and I have to give credit to the teachers, because they had about five weeks in the middle of state assessments to kind of pull all of this together, and for parents, it's a lot to do, but they really came through, so we were happy to see that. One of the things that we really liked was, we have speaking and listening standards, just like we have reading standards and math standards, we actually have standards on having students listen and also speak. And so one of the things that we encouraged people, and we actually gave them a list of questions if they wanted it, was when you come around, ask the different participants different questions. And that was really great for students, and I was happy to see that. One of the things that changes next year is social studies, which has really never been assessed, state assessment-wise at the elementary level, is going to start being assessed. But it's not going to be assessed in a traditional test, it'll be assessed on project-based learning. So kind of that idea of making a project and speaking about it is how it will be assessed. So the idea is that we will do the 4th and 5th grade science fair every other year, so if you're a 4th grade student, you won't have a science fair next year because you participated in this year. And then in those alternating years, we could do some type of social studies, project-based, similar activity where we could have our community patrons and our parents come in and also speaking and listening standards assessed. So very excited for that, but it was a great day for all. Another thing I wanted to talk about, and it seems small, but it's amazing how those small little things can add up. I don't quite know how it happened, and I was speaking to Grant and some other people who've been in the district for a long time, but LES goes, attends 412 minutes per day, the high school goes 420. Under the state of Kansas, they take the building that goes the lower amount of minutes and counts that for your district attendance. So even though the high school goes eight minutes longer per day than we do, we're counted at this level. And we started 8:03, I'm not quite sure how 8:03 ever started. I have a feeling, in speaking to people in the district like Mrs. Larson, who's been here a while, that it might have started when the high school was based right down the street from LES, and they wanted to stagger young teen drivers from when students were walking to school, which makes perfect sense to me. And I wonder if it just never changed when the high school was moved. So one thing to think about, if we would start at 8 o'clock rather than 8:03, just three minutes a day, in 171 student contact days, that would give us 513 minutes. We would add on one whole day and another hour and a half, just on adding three minutes a day. So it'd be something to consider if the board is interested in that, and I'd be happy to take any feedback on that. And that would even us out a little bit in minutes, and maybe we could find other minutes in the day to add on, to increase that time as well. So those were just two things I had.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Walters?
Yes. Just a couple of things. I didn't, I had forgotten, but I talked about regional softball and baseball, where they're at, starting next week, but I didn't mention tracks, or regional tracks at Mankato, just in case you wanted to know. It's on Friday, the twenty first, so. The other thing I wanted to talk about is I have this little diagram that I drew up. I was going to try to explain it, and I just decided sometimes pictures better than trying to explain. Especially when you made your direction challenge. So the stage will be on the east side of the gym as it always is. So if you're looking at the diagram, this is what it is. So back end of the gym, okay? So there's only nineteen seniors graduating this year, and with seven board members, that makes about two or three handing out diplomas, which is a lot of shifting during the ceremony. So we discussed that maybe it would be better to have just Gina and Patty distribute. David's excited about that. Distribute the diplomas, and you guys would just like line up and shake their hands as they walk down the stage.
Oh, yes.
And I know that TJ wants to give Gabe his, so this is kind of what I'm thinking. If you kind of look at the diagram, your chairs will be on the floor. You don't have to sit in those chairs, I just put your hands down. So on that, on this end, you can sit anywhere you want in those four chairs, it doesn't matter. But so you guys will sit on this end of the stage, and then Patty, Gina, and TJ would sit, and Scott would sit on this side with Steve Chris, because he's the class speaker, okay? So when it's time, and then I will be on the stage, because I get up and down quite a bit. And I don't have to walk up and downstairs almost. And so when the time comes that the seniors walk through, then you guys will just line up here on this side of the stage, off the stairs. So when they come down the stairs, they'll just walk and shake hands if they walk through. I will be standing at the podium, so then TJ, you can sit in that chair behind me. And then Patty and Gina, you will stand up and hand out diplomas as I give names. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so they'll walk up here, they'll take their picture where the circle is, shake hands, and then Scott, you'll be on that more side with the rest of the board members shaking hands. So I'm not sure if you want to walk in front of the stage. I'm not really sure how that will be. But once, well, the shuffling is when the seniors get up to kind of walk around, you can kind of walk in front and get on that other side. Just depends, like, we're kind of trying to decide how much room is on the stage, and Scott, you may be able to stand up on the stage and shake hands too, if there's enough room. We'll just kind of wait and see how things go. Does that make sense? So I don't know that you'll need to come to practice unless you want to. It's at eight fifteen on Friday morning, if you want to come, just to kind of see how things are set up and know where you go. You will walk in as we normally have. The teachers walk in first, and they'll sit down, and then the board members come in and sit down, and then the graduates come in. Any questions on any of that?
I think it sounds wicked.
When they come off the stage, we shake their hands. How's that going to interfere with the time and the sequence of continuity?
I don't think it will, because they're going to walk, they walk down, and then they just go sit on this side, right? They go sit on this side of the bleachers once they're done. So they'll shake hands, and they'll just kind of go sit here, and then all together, then they'll come up and sit back in their chairs. So I think it'll flow really nice.
They'll shake all four of our hands, five of our hands?
Yes.
As I'll be, I know when I went to graduation in Nebraska here this weekend, previous weekend, and what they have done up there too is the president hands out diplomas to all the kids, except for if one of the board members' child is there, and that person just jumped up, handed over, and left the stage.
Which is what I think is still happening. I just hand over diplomas, I think, to Patty, and Patty's handing to the rest, yes. And I, yeah, I think it's a lot less.
Yes.
Yeah.
I just wanted to give my son one.
Yeah, of course you do, no, anyways. I think, yeah, and any of those on the board too, we have to give their kiddos.
You guys will all have flowers. So if you stop in the office like you have in the past to get your.
And what time you think it's? Thirty, one forty, one point five-ish?
Depends on the class I can pin them on.
Okay.
Yeah, one thirty, forty, one forty, one forty-five.
When do they take the senior picture, by tell?
Yeah, one, yeah, one fifty, one fifty-five, when we try to get it right out of the comments. And try to start writing.
I'm writing one.
I was going to say, they're.
I'm writing one. And then it's a funny time, be there by one.
And they'll all, you'll all walk in together, like you have in the past.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Kristy. Minutes to attend, you're on.
Just a short.
I'm sorry, I should have handed those out before the meeting started. These are the strategic plan surveys, the responses that I sent out. So I will need you to have a complete printout of every comment, of every survey question, and the cumulative data and the answers to those questions. Here's what I can tell you. We had a hundred and twenty-seven total responses. We had fifty-four parents or guardians, which was forty-two and a half percent. We had twenty-six staff members, which was twenty point five percent. We had forty-one community members, which is outstanding, thirty-two point three percent. We had three board members fill it out, and we had three students fill it out. So a little, I was hoping to get more student input than that, and possibly more input in another category, but the data is very, I think, to the point. To save you the time of looking at the graphs and try to figure it out, I can tell you, in order of importance, by all categories of respondents, is recruit and retain high-quality staff, students, and families. The second place was improve school, parent, and community partnerships and communication. The third was ensure a safe and secure learning environment. The fourth was ensure an effective college and career-ready curriculum for every student, which I think you see we're moving towards. And the fifth one was develop a plan for improving and maintaining facilities. So here's what we do with a typical strategic plan. We look at this data, and the board actually decides which of these areas typically three to five. But if you get too many, then we run out of effectiveness. When the board identifies, this is top-of-the-line conversations, if you remember the board meeting with KASB. This is vision and direction. So out of those five, what are the top three, four that you would like to focus on? And then the admin team takes over from that point for the execution of the operational side. And what the admin team would start doing is filling out a strategic plan for each of the categories that you want to select. We would start identifying a team and identifying action steps, but no plan is any good without expectations and deadlines. So that particular, and you have a hard copy of this, that particular document identifies responsible party, needed resources, at an expected timeline, and then at some given time, we have to go back and have that accountability piece of, is it going where it needs to go? If we're going to develop a long-term plan, then we have to have these checks and balances in place. But we have to get everybody on board with their opinions and find out what is most relevant, not only just to the teachers in the classroom or the administrators in the building or even the board, but we have to understand where this community wants to see their schools going, so we focus our energy in the right, in the right direction. So this is something that you can digest. I would encourage you to read every single comment that's in there. It takes some time, but I think it's very valuable, and you get some really deep insight in those comments. They're not all positive, and that's fine. Some of them are less than kind, and that is fine, because we need everyone's input, and I would encourage you to read them. And on the challenging ones, really take a moment to reflect and try to see the district as a whole, and where might this be coming from? And what of these categories does it fit in, and how can we move forward? So that's pretty, pretty exciting stuff, good feedback, and I think we can continue to move forward. Developing a strategic plan isn't a two- or three-day kind of a thing. So we're just moving towards how to get this thing in place so that we can have measurable goals, and then measure those goals. So now, let me switch gears totally. We've talked in the past about a central kitchen, and how we could move more toward a centralized kitchen. So I'd like to share with you something that I've been working on quite a bit. Met with kitchen staff at the high school, and Norma and Greta, and we just sat down and had a brainstorming session of what this could look like. So it's kind of a crazy vision, but I hope you can see where we're trying to move with this. So the concept was produce everything at one location and ship it out. We've kind of morphed after talking to everybody and thought, maybe we could do a modified central kitchen and just have hot production in one kitchen and cold production in the other. What we could do is have two employees at each location, and according to this plan, and nobody thought it would work, we would have three employees start at the high school for the hot meal prep. That third person would transport the cart, the hot cart with food, to the elementary school and stay there for service. And then at the end of service, they would take the vehicle back to the high school with the dirty pans and empty pans, and then go back to the grade school from there. So we would have three in hot production, one in cold production. And when I mean cold production, they may be chopping celery or broccoli or setting up the cold carts, kind of the salad bar kind of concept. But it shouldn't take two people to do that part. The main production will be in the main kitchen of high school. So that's kind of where we're going. So what does it look like? Currently, the two third-grade classrooms are the former library, if you remember that. And there was a partition wall put in there to separate them into two rooms for safety and convenience and efficiency. My proposal is that we remove that partition, and we turn that into a well-lit, vibrant, main-floor cafeteria area. Some comments were made and some observations from that little group that met and from outside sources. This could also be a really unique meeting area if people needed a place to go. Mrs. Schmidt has said an opening, morning, greeting, flag salute, information time. It might have been Mr. Schmidt that said, you know, community members might need to have a meeting somewhere in a venue that's bigger. So where this sits, if you're with me, this wall right here is on the west side, and these are the doors right at that corner on that west side. There's two sets of doors, some go in the gymnasium, and then there's your glass door down the hall. So the food would be delivered into this parking lot, wheeled down that hallway by the current computer lab, and then just turn the corner and go in the cafeteria. This is just a mock-up. I, you know, this is what you get for free and when you have no tech skills. So this is basically what I had envisioned as the service line. Maybe the first one is trays and silverware, and then a service line. Possibly, this is the cold bar, and then maybe trash and stack your stuff, trays or silverware, whatever else there. This is flex and flow. It's, like you said, my idea. That's kind of what it looks like, three D. This is the funny thing. The only thing I'd find on this freebie was a cart, so the carts represent the steam table, the cold table, and everything else. Yeah.
And when we talked about a morning meeting, I'm sorry, Mr. Crenshaw, trying to interrupt, and we talked about adding time back into the day, and we could increase our instructional time. So there is, and it's gaining popularity throughout the nation. Schools are starting, not necessarily earlier, but they're maybe starting at seven fifty-five. But if they're having morning announcements, and, you know, a daily goal, the pledge of allegiance, that counts as instructional time. So while we're eating our breakfast, if we're doing other things, we can add some time back there. And, you know, even, like I said, three minutes will gain us a day. Adding five minutes on, you could pick up five, you know, five days or more. So just, that's what we're talking about for that. But right now, we don't have a space to do that.
Not one that's not echoing through the gymnasium. So this would be a very efficient.
Or that's on two levels.
So here's the needs that we identified. And the reason I'm looking at a handicap minivan is for risk to the employee. It's very low to the ground. The ramps are very low angle, so it's not a Tommy lift truck. It's not a cargo van with a big ramp that could gather up speed. I've got some pictures of some examples and some prices, but what I'm finding is, for the capacity that we need, one of those handicap minivans should hold two hot carts, but I don't know that we'll need more than one. And everything else is pretty much self-explanatory right there. So this is an idea of a three compartments steam table. You can see the price up in the corner, about eighteen hundred dollars. This is the cold table, and it's not exactly accurate, because depending on service, it might have to have a sneeze guard or something like that. This is a tabletop cold table, which is less expensive and could just be put on a table without wheels or anything. And then, of course, we need some transport carts to go back and forth to the downstairs kitchen for that cold prep to be moved up, the lift out of the basement, and to get any items that need to be cleaned up or put back a way back down. To do the floor, we're waiting on a bid, which I know is probably going to be an eye-opener. But underneath of that carpet is concrete right now, and what we need to do is probably go back to this VCT tile, which is your typical industrial tile that gets waxed and stripped and maintained like that. A dollar nine a square feet, and that particular facility with both classrooms combined is sixteen hundred and forty-eight square feet. So with some labor, we could get a floor in there pretty inexpensively. This is one of the hot carts, just an example. It plugs in. It holds an ambient temperature for four-plus hours or a safe food temperature for four-plus hours. It has a little tiny heater in the door for a recovery heat, but the insulation alone holds the temp on the foods. And here's some, just looking online at, just Googling handicap minivans, just to get an idea of price. So that's one example. That's one example. You can see the ramp is very low-profile, and if you go back, there's handles right here on each side that help hold on to that thing, so you don't have your arms around a cart. You actually have handles that you can move around. So I think it would be safe for people to move around. So here's, here's the estimates, and some of them are a little high intentionally. So I think for about thirty thousand dollars, we could convert this to a modified central kitchen. Now, it sounds like a lot of money, but we currently have five employees in food service, and we can absorb the retirement and go to four, which should save us about twenty-one thousand dollars a year in pay, benefits, and everything else. So really, the return on investment for that is about one point four years. After a year and a half, we should be able to realize the savings of that twenty-one plus in food service. So that's where the idea kind of came up. I'm constantly looking at efficiencies, constantly trying to get ideas on how to streamline things. And this is just something we've been beating around most of the school year as to how can we get to more of a central kitchen mentality? That's the end of that particular one. Something to consider, I would like to go ahead and plan it. This is the kind of money that we can spend out of wind tower money that's replenished every January. We have accumulated an amount there that needs to be invested in our district. I think we're currently at about a hundred and eighty thousand in gifts and grants that's not specified for a particular project. So that has built up over time, and it's there for a reason. And I think for things like this, we need to start utilizing that money to move us ahead. I don't think the wind tower payment taxes was ever. I don't think the Wind Tower payment, taxes, was ever intended to be a savings account for us. So that's, that's why I'm looking at ideas like this. The next thing online is the Commissioners Award, or the KSDE Awards, if you will. And if you read the newspaper or Dr. Watson's presentation, I would just like to reiterate our successes and talk about that, and our successes moving forward with ag and digital media and things like that. We are doing great things, and our staff is doing great things. So we received the Commissioners Award, which recognizes districts that outperform our predicted post-secondary effectiveness, which is a bizarre thing, because if you, if you know what the effective rate is, it is, what is one of our graduates doing two years after they leave us? We're responsible for two years after they're even under our watch. So that's why it's so important to have pathways and industry-recognized credentials, because if they get a CNA, or they get a Microsoft certification, they are already considered effective at graduation. And we don't worry about what happens two years down the road when they're out of our control. So we exceeded our predicted effective rate, so we're doing great things there. We got a Copper Star Award in high school graduation, which means our four-year graduation cohort met the state average of 89.9%. When you have very small classes, one person who doesn't complete is a significant percentage. So those, is 89% great? No. No, the state goal is 95%. That's why it's bronze and not, or copper and not gold. It's not gold, silver, or bronze, it's copper. So there's room for improvement, but the reality of it is, every student that doesn't graduate here has a significant percentage effect on us. But I still congratulate our high school, and because not only is the high school responsible for graduation, and our staff needs to understand this, graduation starts in kindergarten. Every single teacher and parent in this district is responsible for our graduation rate. And if they don't have the tools they need by the time they reach high school, they're at greater risk. And our elementary teachers are doing a great job of getting them ready so that they participate in the graduation of our students. Let's see, we did get a Bronze Star in post-secondary success. So across all grade levels, scoring three or four on the state assessments, we had 50, we were in the 50 to 59.9% range of students scoring three or four on state assessments. Is that fantastic? No, because that means up to 50%, 40 to 50%, we're not at threes or fours. So as we get this curriculum in place, as we have the right tools in place, everything is looking good, and we're moving in the right direction. So funding, school funding. I am happy to report the following from KASB. These are highlights of what they did in the last two days, not that they had us all sweating. So here's a summary of what happened. They are going, the state is going to fully fund K-12 for the next two years in accordance with that Gannon lawsuit. So there will be no reduction in funding that violates the Gannon lawsuit. That's huge. They are going to continue the 20 mil property tax levy for schools for two years. That's huge. That provides $800 million in the state of Kansas for education. They defeated the Education Savings Act, which would have taken public tax dollars and sent it to public, or to private schools. Kelly vetoed, Governor Kelly vetoed a bill which would have required students to pass a civics and financial literacy course, and there was no motion to override that. And what's important with this, as I said before, local control's a wonderful thing. There has never been anything in the Constitution gives a legislature power to determine what students take. That power is given to the Kansas State Board of Education. So that's why she vetoed it, and it did not get overridden. So that is good. Power stays where it should stay. Her veto on firearm safety courses did not have an override attempt. The bill that would have banned transgendered athletes did not pass. That veto was sustained. They did override the tax cut bill. So in the future, we'll see where that goes, but our revenues in the state have been over projections for a while, and they immediately passed a tax cut. She vetoed it, and they overrode the veto. So we'll see how that plays out. If it's like the previous governor, then we may see some interesting times in the future. They have also overrode a bill, or they overrode a veto of a bill that allows 18-year-olds to concealed carry. So 18-year-olds will be able to concealed carry. This does not affect a ban on weapons in school, though. So unfortunate, but at least the school should still be a gun-free zone. So that's exciting news. The high-density at-risk waiting that I talked to you about the last time, those potential cuts, has been extended, so that's good. The summary of this is, we are in a better position than we could have possibly been. We are now looking at that Craig Neinswander $72,000 reduction in funding based on student count, and that may be our only impact after this legislative session. So there was a lot at risk, and things worked out well for us. That's all I have. Sorry for the bad word.
No, thanks. All right, so all good information?
Yes.
Just a quick question. You mentioned about the wood plant there, that we have the Wind Tower money. Where do we have our lease loan purchases? Is it one of those things that we had for tag for some of that money to kind of pay off that also?
We have, I just printed that out the other day. Our roof payment is $27,000 a year, and we have two more years on it. And our computer payment is $15,000 a year.
And how many years do we have left?
I think there's just two on it as well. So both lease purchases will be retired in two years.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Frenchon?
Exciting things going on.
Well, we will move into executive session for personnel. Two, one. How much? She's on one. Uh-huh. Okay. Okay, we move that we recently, the executive session for personnel for 10 minutes. Okay, go to the second.
Sorry.
Mm-hmm. Move by David, second by David, that you're seeing, you don't need to work with education, you want to executive session at 8:21, how old time you get to it? For 10 minutes with the superintendent for the purpose of discussing personnel matters for non-elected personnel, and then the board return to open session at 8:31. And the board of education conference room, the executive session is required to protect and protect the interests of identifiable individuals. All in favor? Six oh.